Last time.
Yeah.
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 And I was hoping about Alan and Kenneth Trevor.
Yes.
And I was like, you seem welcome to get set up with all that. He came in and I broke the whole thing with him and I helped.
It's not a.
You're going and then basically, no, he was starting to go. So.
Welcome to the September 11th, 2025 Planning Board. Our chair is not here, so I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. Like to ask, we stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing at for a moment as announced through September 11th, as well as the other horrific events that have taken place these last 24 hours. Thank you. I'd like to begin by appointing Ray LaMay as a voting member of the planning board this evening, so that we have a quorum. And first thing on our agenda is a conceptual to Tebow Corporation concerning Tax Map 201, Lot 114, and rural ag zone. Proposal of a subdivision to create five residential parcels. This project will require a conditional use permit for common driveway slope, as well as a variance for more than two lots to be accessed by a common driveway. So.
Good evening. My name is Brad Casperson. I'm a professional engineer with Meridian Land Services, and I'm here to represent this application this evening on behalf of Tebow Corporation of New Hampshire. What was submitted was a conceptual application for a conventional subdivision. The lot, the parent parcel lot has frontage on both Thorndike Road as well as Rosarave Drive. The total lot area is about, just about 30 acres from the information that we've looked at. The way that this subdivision has been laid out, conceptually at least, was to comply, obviously, with the town zoning ordinance, but more specifically lots exceeding five acres in size, as well as a minimum frontage of 250 feet exclusive of this lot right here, where the zoning allows for 50 feet of frontage, where you have 10 acres or greater. Also depicted on this plan is grading for the proposed northerly common driveway accessing four of the lots that are depicted here. Potential building envelopes, as well as potential driveways to each, for each lot. Fire truck turnarounds as required. We have one right here. I believe that's only, oh, and then one at the very end. And then potential wells with protective well radii. As was noted, the northerly common driveway, the way it's been graded, we're anticipating that a conditional use permit would be required to allow for a 12% grade or 10% required. And then also variances would be required for both common driveways. This one would be serving three lots, where two is the maximum allowed. And then this one's obviously serving four, where two is allowed. Although the variances are, you know, the zoning board's jurisdiction, we're trying to get any feedback we can that will help us direct us in our design and, you know, satisfy the town goals. One last thing that I wanted to note was regarding the, the common driveway off Thorndike Road. It's the applicant's intent to utilize the rights granted to them under the easement and right-of-way deed that is imposed on the lot, as well as abutting lots. As we understand it, this permits the applicant, the owner, to utilize the existing driveway that's partially on the lot, although it does encroach onto the abutting lot and its intention is to service another abutting lot. But it's our understanding that they have the right to use it. I didn't submit a copy of the deed with the application, but we'd be more than happy to provide a copy if, you know, town councilor, anyone wanted to review it. As this is a conceptual application, we're just looking for feedback, more specifically on lot configuration, the use and the layouts of the common driveways, the conditional use permit for the driveway slope, support of the common driveway variances, or not support, and the proposed use of the existing easement and right-of-way access. That's really about all that I have, so I appreciate your time, and I'll open it up to how many questions may have.
Have you, um, we've got a relatively new, was it 36th and 39?
37.
37. Private road ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a private road, not a common driveway.
And that's, you know, the separation that we're seeking, you know, to get the relief for the common driveway, which would allow it to access the lots.
Yeah, but, but by our zoning ordinance, it's a, over two lots is a private road.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got a private road ordinance that we just adopted.
Yep.
Two years ago.
Yes.
Yep, I'm aware of it. The intent is really to avoid that and any sort of right-of-way dedications and rather formalize.
The private road is no right-of-way dedication.
Or through easement, I guess.
Through, through easement.
Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, it's really just to, I mean, they wanted to create estate lots out here, not create more than what's needed, maybe, if that's the board's opinion. It seemed like a simpler process to get variances and treat them as common driveways, rather than pursuing the private road standards.
So then you would need to have an easement for all four of those lots, five of those. Yes, all four of those lots, right?
Yeah, there'd be.
A new easement.
Yes. Essentially just sweeping through them.
We haven't had anybody try that type of variance yet. I, as a board member, wouldn't support that variance because we do have private road regulation. Can't speak for the other board members, but.
And I guess if we were going to pursue a private road, I would, it's been a bit since I've read through them, but from what I remember is there would be a significant amount of relief required. So I guess, you know, if we were to go down the private road route, would waivers potentially be supported?
You'd, I think it, stand a much better chance with that approach, as opposed to trying to get a.
Variance?
Variance.
Okay, that makes sense.
Because the geometry requirements are in the subdivision regulations, not zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So the planning board can.
Yeah, and that's the question, yeah, if it's preferable to kind of go down that route, okay.
I, I think I'd recommend if you're going to put a turnaround at the top for your fire truck, to be off the driveway areas.
Okay, so don't let, have it separated, don't have it a dual use, basically.
Separated down.
Hey, when you treat it as part of the driveway, people think it's their own and they tend to plug them up.
I get it, yeah.
Make them unusable.
Yep.
Plus, you're gonna need to look at, if it's not a private road or becomes a public road, and it's a common-use driveway, you're still gonna need to deal with where you're gonna put your snow, especially on that slope.
Mm-hmm.
So they might need to be, after that first turn at the bottom that comes in, there needs to be a pushout. There needs to be a pushout on that other corner.
Mm-hmm.
As well as just beyond the fire, or where the fire truck moves.
Yeah, some things that are not really being shown, which ultimately, you know, we would incorporate is, you know, opening up this slope to create a flatter area for things like that and stormwater management and, you know.
We'd, you'd also need to address possible, because of the slope, where's all that water going?
Yes.
Off the top of the hill.
Yeah, ultimately, we would, it would have to either be broken out into smaller stormwater practices, but obviously ultimately it goes to the, the road. So I was anticipating something adjacent to the road and maybe a separate practice, but we haven't really gotten to that point because we didn't know the board's thoughts on the subdivision.
It'd also be helpful for this last lot, 114 B4, to have a clearer picture of where your driveway is going. Because right there, it's, it's kind of, it's not really clear. The others are pretty clear where the driveways are going. That driveway looks like it ends at the lot. It doesn't give me the indication that it's part of a driveway that sweeps in.
Yeah, we could bring more clarity on what this existing, I mean, it's, we have the line work in there, but it's kind of hidden in there.
Are these two lots owned by?
These two?
Separate entities?
Are you talking, pointing to these two? Yes, they are.
And they're two separate entities, or is it one, one entity owns both those lots?
Nope, so three different entities for all three lots of them.
The other thing is that over three lots like this would require a system, and you got to make a deal with the fire department to see what you can do with system or sprinklers or.
And I guess something that's, we're clearly working against here is slope.
Mm-hmm.
You know, common driveway, driveway, private road. I guess what's, is there any input on that, I guess?
We really don't. We have a lot sizing chart. I mean, minimum lot size is five acres, but we've also got a lot sizing chart for.
Yeah, soil-based lots.
Soil-based, yeah.
Yeah, we recognize that we'll need to ultimately go through and vet it these further. I mean, there's no on-the-ground survey here, so we recognize there's a next degree.
We don't have a steep slope ordinance that prevents running a driveway across there, so.
But obviously, there's road slope requirements, common driveway.
And erosion control.
Mm-hmm. And I anticipate regardless of which access route we go, we're gonna need, be requesting some sort of relief on that, and I don't, I guess that was the bigger question of.
Some, some of that's going to be dependent on what the fire department feels is safe for them to drive a truck up there.
Okay.
So that would be something to explore.
Usually when we get to that, we do request their input.
Well, it's definitely going to be a high maintenance driveway. They know that for experience.
Well, fortunately, there isn't a house up there yet now, so they can do the maintenance agreements and all that like we require. It's great. So.
Whether it's, even if it's a common driveway or a private road, there's gonna be an easement over it to protect it.
Yeah, we, in the private road thing, we require a deed of maintenance.
Okay.
Agreements, you know, recorded.
Mm-hmm.
So everyone knows what's going on.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
We've got a lot of these in town that, there's already two houses up there, and they want to put a third one, and the other two didn't do a maintenance agreement, becomes a kind of a.
Oh, a headache for.
A headache.
Trying to figure it out, yeah.
We're setting fresh here, so there's nothing, there's, there's nobody that's gonna benefit from not having a maintenance agreement.
Right, and that's why, you know, we thought it would be beneficial to, obviously, there's some obstacles with the lot. There's plenty of acreage, it has frontage, and just trying to figure out a way that applicant could use it.
Private road, does it have to be eight?
No.
No, it's gonna be 20 foot in width, so approved by.
You got a retaining wall here, and you got a retaining wall here. We're gonna get the same situation there as we have on River Road. Two, three houses away from you, every time it rains, there's a half an inch of silt in the middle of the road. Can't help it. Impossible, you know.
Yeah.
Look at the steepness.
Yeah.
12%.
12.
Down to the road. And you're cutting through, I mean, look at the contour lines.
I know, it's a big cut going up there on the one side, on uphill side.
Is it doable? Of course it is, we can build anything.
It's doable.
Equipment, but is it practical? No. You have two retaining walls holding everything back, you got all this water coming down. There's really no place to go. I mean, as steep as this is, how are you gonna do a detention base in there?
I mean.
Kind of blowout.
So we're cutting below grade through here, and, you know, I was thinking this, as much as this, it needs to be carved out to create some sort of storage, that's what it's gonna be. If it needs to be addressed higher up, you know, it's flatter along this ridge, then we would separate and put stormwater, although I understand completely what you're saying. This obviously slopes right to the road, so the material is probably sandy and, you know, supports what you're saying.
I'm just thinking more about the people that are gonna buy these lots, and do they realize how much it's gonna cost them to live there?
Right, and I think that's the product that they're, they want to create, you know, five nice estate lots that are gonna be a higher value.
Fortunately, unlike River Road.
I wouldn't call them a nice estate lot, being, having a driveway cut in between all of them, we, makes the lot kind of useless.
Fortunately, unlike River Road built in the 50s and 60s, they're gonna have better control of the water up here, they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
I mean, when River Road was built, that was just blast a road through the woods and from the slope to the road.
Some of the newer driveways that are there are the ones I'm talking about. They go right up.
Oh, I know. Or down.
Not, not, not everybody has equipment like I have.
Yeah.
You know, I can do, I did a lot of work on my lot, so none of that happens, but it's a constant maintenance thing.
Yeah.
If I calculated how much money I spend a year to maintain my driveway, no, most people couldn't do that.
Yeah.
I mean, 114 dash two, he's got the short end of the stick, well, and three, because they get the majority of the job with their property.
Mm-hmm.
The nice lot is the one on top.
Yeah, which is why it's obviously the 10-acre remainder up on the top. And I guess river road-wise, you know, that's DOT road, so they would be allowing up to 20% or 15%. So just thinking out loud a little bit.
Yeah, not anymore. I just throw caution to the wind, that's all.
Yeah.
Whether it's doable or not is not my say, but it's a challenge. It's a challenge.
So would this be something that you would just get approved and try to sell a lot? So would you actually build the driveway and?
You guys would build it, right?
Don't depend too much on whether you look a package deal or what we do, but given process, yeah.
My personal experience, these, these, this type of driveway like this was, it, it's, if you try to sell a lots and, and not build a driveway, you know, sell it like, get it approved and then sell it that way, it becomes very problematic, getting the driveway built like it's intended to be built, because they're all gonna claim that they had no idea it was gonna cost that much to build. So on a driveway like this, I mean, I'm, even though it would be a private, on a private driveway, I'm, I'd really look into, if you guys didn't build it, then somehow assure, somehow assure that it gets built like the plan, whether it be bonding or whatever. Because, I mean, we've got, we've got a lot up the street on 114 that we approved two years ago that has a similar driveway to that, it's got a, at the time we approved it, I said, I said to the chairman, I was the vice chairman, I said, "That's a $100,000 retaining wall they gotta build to build that driveway." He says, "Yeah, I know." Well, the thing's sitting there, no one's bought it, because no, you, once you add the price of the lot in there and that retaining wall, it just, it's out of the picture. That's just a single lot, but when you've got a, four lots using it here, it's, and, you know, the guy that buys this lot, because I'm gonna outweigh, outweigh everybody and let them build the driveway. You know, it, it's, and then.
No matter where I.
It doesn't get done right.
I got some serious contour lines everywhere.
Hmm.
So I guess that's a question for, think about.
Another, another, throw a monkey wrench in here. Instead of dividing this up into four, divide the whole thing into just three. Then you have your real estate situation, so you can make this other lot off of Thorndike a little bigger and divide the rest up into two lots that are more reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
And bigger. So it seems now you're dealing with one driveway with two lots.
It's a common driveway.
And one driveway over here, or this common driveway off of this, that's already deeded, easement, right?
Mm-hmm.
To access that, but we'd make it bigger and they could come up. Just a thought.
I guess, while.
Did you explore maybe the possibility, and I don't know, we got a stream here, but it's an unnamed stream, coming in off Thorndike with just a road coming into here, and then splitting off the lots this way, one road. You have one big knob to go through here, but the rest of it's flat.
Yeah, we did, I mean, it'd just be, there'd be a substantial, I mean, we could also do a similar thing here and meander up it, but there's a decent amount of cut coming through here. One other thing that, I mean, obviously this is before you, I guess, but just to conceptually discuss it, we were reviewing potentially just a, a multi-family use and just using this lower pad and utilizing the density of the lot for it. However, the zoning requirements required that it be based on a conventional lot sizing, which is soil-based lot sizing. So it requires us to do a soil map of the whole parcel, which is a lot of work. I guess.
Do you know what your soils are there? Is it gravelly, rocky?
I'm pretty sure it's gravelly. I mean, I believe the owner bought it originally for excavation purposes, although that wasn't, you know, performed.
Yeah, it's a grill, it's right across the street.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think that's it. Yep.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Pretty much everyone's dropped.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, second conceptual is for 294 Mountain Road. Tax map for 10, lot 15, Havenbrook Horsemanship LLC. Pose two in the business for horse training, possibly go to horses, daytime camp, and small lesson program.
Thanks for having me. I'm Nicole, I'm the owner at Havenbrook Farm. And we had the assessor out a couple of weeks ago, and it sounds like people would like to know what we want to do. So we have a horse farm with a few horses, and we would like to create space for kids to come, learn about horsemanship, riding lessons, and also do horse training. And we are looking to have a couple of boarders come in as well.
How big of a barn is it?
Uh, the original barn is three stalls, and we have another three-stall barn that we had built last year.
I mean, the idea, how many, like 30 by 30 or something?
Uh, so it's two different barns. Let's see, they're 12, 10, 10 by 12 stalls. The new barn is 12, 12 by 42.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
What's the difference between rural agricultural conservation and rural agriculture?
There's a conservation overlay, which.
I can't say.
Which.
That's because it's near.
Really, when our zoning was two-acre zoning, conservation overlay lots were five acres. But since we went to five-acre lot size, now there's very little difference.
I also saw the, reading about the conservation overlay, because that was new to me, as of a couple of weeks ago, and it sounds like the town would like that land to remain agricultural purposes.
Mm-hmm.
We're on 26 acres there, and the, the front part of it where the house and the barn are is, is where the riding ring is, so that's where everything kind of takes place. The rest of it, there's a few acre field in the back that's just turnout for the horses, and then we have just wooded area behind that, which is next to the conservation land.
So doesn't this type of business ready to go there? Isn't this the rural agriculture?
Yeah. It seems like it was all very well laid out in the zoning ordinance for both the rural agricultural zoning and the overlay.
Well, I'm a big proponent of keeping everything agricultural.
I know, I was excited I was invited here for this. Seems to go right in line with the master plan, too.
Yeah.
Keeping every, you know, keeping things open and.
So that, just like at Jewett Road, is that what that?
It's, we're actually right in the corner of Jewett and Mountain.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Right where everybody goes down to Farren.
Yeah.
They go past our driveway.
Yeah, okay.
That's probably why it's good conservation part.
Yeah, yes, conservation land right there.
Farren.
Yeah. So. Do you have any employees?
Nope, just me.
Okay. Do you intend to have any employees?
Um, if we do the, so the summer camps, we would like to do, we, we did a few this summer, just small ones, a couple of partial weeks and a full week. And being that I have three horses that I use for it, I just ran it myself, and I just had about three, four kids max that were at my own, too. So I just did it myself, and it was fine, but I think next year if we do four or five kids, like, it would probably be only up to a maximum of six, just because we're gonna need to add horses at that point, which I don't want to do.
Day camp?
Yeah, day camp, yep. Um, then I would probably have like a couple girls come help me out, so.
It would probably be just part-time though, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I put together a little, just kind of like an overview if you guys want to see it, kind of give you an idea of like the hours and the.
We use for restroom facilities at day camp?
Uh, we just have our house.
Okay.
It's not, our barn is small, it's not a, it's not a commercial barn, unfortunately.
The only room for the stalls, right?
Yeah. It seemed to work out fine with the few kids that we had there.
And you obviously just do this during summer vacation while school's out?
Yeah, so we did horse camp during summer vacation, but as far as like the boarding and training goes, if we had, yeah, yeah, so.
That's right, Matt.
Yeah, the, the kid's summer vacation, yeah. Lessons we can do after school, yep.
Could, we get a copy of this?
You can just keep it if you want.
Okay.
That was a very high-level overview.
Keep that in the file. It's kind of our, limits of our business at this point.
So the only thing I would say at this point, there doesn't seem to be anything that prohibits this from happening.
Right.
Except for just a point of reference for you, that if something like this is permitted within the context of our zoning, we also have the responsibility to report change of use issues.
Okay.
Such as making your original barn for your own horses to become a business.
Okay.
So it's just a point of reference to inform.
Okay.
As opposed to saying you have to be approved to do that.
Okay.
Only because I've got some building permit issues here that have been approved after the fact.
Yeah, I, I.
So I'm just, just as a reference to. So I'm just, just as a reference to be aware. As opposed to, oh, I got permission, I get permitted to do this because it says I can do this. You know, we have a right to farm and everything, but when we make it a business, then that becomes something that's different than just doing it our own.
Okay.
So just as a reference.
And if you get to the point where you've got, say, a full-time employee or something, then that, that changes like the nature of the business?
Okay. And like the number of kids for camp, that type of thing?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you go, say, if you're gonna say you're, you're starting with three, four, well, what if it becomes fifteen?
Right.
So now you've got fifteen using your bathroom facility.
Right.
And so now you're overtaxing your septic system. So you may need to upgrade opportunity, whether it's through porta-potties or through a new septic system that is attached to one of the barns or an outbuilding that deals with that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that you're, you're not, again, taxing your property through the business opportunity.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there, do you happen to know what the limitation would be? I, I have no intention of going that large because horses are too expensive, to be honest. But do you know what the limitation would be as far as the number of kids before it turns into something different that I might not know about?
I go by the rule of when it's asked to know your neighbors.
How many neighbors?
If you get that, that many kids, you're gonna need a full-time employee.
Right.
So I'd say-
At that point, I would come to the town and ask the questions, okay.
Right.
Perfect.
You're not, you're not gonna have that many kids there by yourself.
No, thank you.
Not unless you're suicidal.
Yeah. I'm the pastor of Ware Christian Church and we contemplated building, a fo- a building on our property. And when I went to, for the septic design, how many people do you expect? Well, a hundred people using this building. Well, he's at every day, every, each month, a week, and not everybody goes.
Right.
You know, but you still have to design something that meets that volume. And so, you know, it becomes cumbersome to try to figure that out if you want. So, just an FYI to be aware that if your septic tank is filling up quicker than it usually does, then might be something to investigate, either pumping more or there needs to be other facilities available. Any questions?
Can I help?
Well, just from my own knowledge, I'm new to the law, so I'm trying to learn all this stuff. So I might say things that aren't even legal, but just for you. On, on a concert, on a rural agricultural property, right, you're allowed to have a farm.
Right, the farm.
Isn't a farm a business?
It is, but it's got a special designation as a farm, so it's got special-
All right.
There's granted leeways and other businesses aren't.
Yeah. And it's not written into the rural agricultural zone that you can have specific types of businesses? Wouldn't this be one of them? I just want to know. It seems to me it should be all really good.
Well, yeah, yes, it is. I can't remember where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, the right to farm thing is state law and not, you know, zoning.
So minimum lot size is five acres. And then it talks about other things, condominiums or duplexes that can go in there meeting certain requirements.
Perimeter. This is, uh, this is in the same-
This is all article fourteen lot size restrictions. Zoning districts. I think it's later on.
Look, it is an article for each district.
I don't remember what section it was, but I remember seeing in there-
I should know that.
Keeping of horses and cattle for business.
Special exemptions.
Wait, copy this on paper right there.
Well, it lasts longer and you'll copy it. I think we've already- This is, this is rural ag right here.
Yeah, okay.
Seventeen. Primated uses, zoning districts. Class five, six rural, rural ag, permitted uses right here.
Barn shed, none of these farm buildings, accessory structures. Grazing, keep livestock out, or something. Got a game for business. Home-based business, don't worry about the foundation, or whatever, you know, professional services.
So it's all within-
Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, if you, before you hire somebody full-time.
Yeah.
Check out the list.
Probably won't be doing that, but half the job is to keep up the farming.
Any questions?
No.
So it doesn't require any further? Okay, no, I just need that big player.
Okay.
So if you, like Bruce said, if there's any changes coming down the bike as far as expansion or growth or new buildings, those obviously have to go through the building process. And then any type of additional septic design, et cetera.
Okay.
That's to be addressed.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so master plan, subcommittee update, the survey has been closed. Online, we've received four hundred and fifty-nine responses. Planning to talk to Naomi about the timing for when we can meet as a subcommittee to start to go through that data. It's interesting that with Survey Monkey, there are some places where you can give personal input and those don't get reported. Those are the subcategory of some, but takes you someplace else, so you'd have to print that separate from what is available. I'll send a PDF copy of what we have so far. I will open it again, not to the public, but open it again in order to put in the, um, the handed hard copies, those don't, aren't represented here. So that's probably gonna take a little time in order to figure out how to do.
How many, how many?
The labor of doing that. I might have to pick them up and forgot they were closed today. But I need to pick up and-
And he came in like you were in here watching the dog and pony show.
Well, there's at least one, because mine is in there.
How many paper copies we getting here?
I have no idea. The, the box was in there the entire time.
And so from that data, we'll cast whatever concerns are as to examining. Go put aside by each to the present plan. And actually actionables, not the report part, of what actionables from the data that leaps off the page to say, these are things we need to address. And then revamp the present plan. Specifically actionables. As opposed to just data. Okay, any questions on that? We have minutes from the twenty-eighth. I wasn't present, so I don't know if-
I looked at it, might have seen it, nothing jumped out at me.
I read it over and it, there doesn't seem to be any issues.
I have.
It was there right there. Oh, that's the-
No, there's the other, it's over here. Twenty-eight meetings minutes. That's the one.
Totally one.
Did you see anything that you should correct? I really didn't.
No, I didn't see anything.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion too. So the, for the minutes of August twenty-eighth is written.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other business?
There's no, there's probably no sense in doing anything with so many.
Right.
The next meeting- The next meeting will be busy, I think.
Right. So do you, um, Naomi mentioned something to me about solar array documentation that she has available that she would be sending to us. So that, that will go into the-
Came from Celine Angie. I can email her.
Email to that, to us, so that's something for us to prove, as well as whatever, I think there was something else Danny Jean had sent us. Which I'll try, I'll, I know I have it. I'll just go find it and send it back out. Um, with the- Depending software that's before-
Yeah, if you want it.
Before us, that, um, some of the documentation will be changed into that anyways, right?
Yeah, the idea is they're gonna have, every single permit that we issue in town is gonna be available online for them to fill out.
Okay. So, is that something, is, is it a template that's being developed or is it something that's already built into the software that it just?
No, they'll, they'll tailor them to our-
So with that said, I'll, I'll continue. We still have to sit down with, with this above the condition to use permits, so I'll do that. Just, I've been just crazy, Will.
Yeah, because the, the more we can give them, like, is it a pre-formatted type permit, they can kind of make the software mimic that thing.
Yep. And will it be in a print, uh, fillable, editable PDF type of thing?
They'll print out a PDF when it's done. It's actually printing, filling the whole thing out online.
Online, okay. Because we did have something to that effect with, um, per, uh, what do you call it? Usage per, uh, forms for using fields, et cetera. And then it disappeared. So then I, it was a state form that we were using, so I found out on some other town's website. So I just keep that and we change the dates and so forth, but, okay. Can we, just for the record, say, in, in our understanding, we have solar wetlands. What are the other?
ADU.
ADU, to update.
Yep.
There was an email from Craig that there was another entity putting together a bullet sheet or checklist sheet pertaining to those recent changes. I can't remember what the entity-
Yeah, so we listened. Southern Hampshire planning put together a, um, webinar for our communities that they, it belonged to Southern Hampshire and Bedford had put together an FAQ.
Right.
And, um, a bulletin checklist that they have sent to us now that we can all share.
Okay. And then the other, other thing-
October fourth seminar that-
Yes.
They're having a, I think-
No, no one asked me to sign them up.
Oh.
I heard, I, I read that in the minutes. But the October fourth is also the auction, right?
Yes, I, I can't remember because of that.
It's the same day as the auction.
Yeah.
Would it be nice if you guys could go?
That's on a Saturday?
Yeah.
Let me think about it.
We've still got time, I think, to sign up. I just got another-
I remember the deadline.
I just got another thing about it yesterday, I think.
We'll push it and still email everybody.
Do, so the other one was, that came from Steve about unplated cars.
Junkyard.
Oh, junkyard.
Which-
Unregistered cars.
Yeah, unregistered cars, which comes down to the issue of, is it a junkyard or is it just junk in the yard? So if they're operating, has a junkyard, that's something totally different than accumulating junk in the yard.
Steve's just looking for something a little more-
There's no definition, um, there used to be, I thought, to unregistered cars, but there's not anymore.
So, does that open up a can of worms for?
He is looking for, for, he, he, he has nothing to point at right now to tell people that three unregistered, you know, falling apart cars in the yard, that they've got to do something with them.
Right.
I know a few places in town like that.
But then you put American Pickers out of business.
Yeah.
Anyways, but, but does that open up a can of worms for the next step for the person who's concerned about that to say, they don't mow them long enough, lawn enough? You know, we're not, we're not living in, we're not living in, our community at large is not an HOA. You know, there are HOAs or places in town that you can't, you have to. You can't have your camper on your property for a certain period of time. You have to make sure that your leaves are picked up at a certain date. You have to have your grass mowed. If you're not gonna get it mowed, then someone's gonna mow it for you and charge whatever it's gonna be.
I would hope Ware never gets to that. Not too long ago, when we built our house here, people wanted, people were telling me I shouldn't have built my house here in this town. It was too big.
The town was too big or your house was too big?
I don't think it was.
It's, bigger houses have been built since.
Bigger houses, yeah. But at the time, it was the second, uh, largest tax structure. Didn't last long, but it's amazing how things change. That's what I'm trying to bring up for, to a point.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they've only know you shouldn't build something like that and where it's a tar paper shack town that'll never go anywhere, while it is, right?
Expensive tar paper.
It's expensive. And so, like you say, I, I, I never would want to see it come with all these ordinances that tell you how to live. I've always been one of those that, leave me alone. I'll leave you alone, you leave me alone, and everybody's gonna be happy.
So you've got, you're down to four?
I've got four. I think there's another one that I, I- I wrote it down.
Your wetlands, you get the wetland?
Yeah. Solar wetlands, ADU, unregistered-
ADUs, unregistered wetlands-